So just I went through, and I do this informally. I do it for myself each year going forward, timing for the next year for the events. But it's typically not till December that we figure out the amount that's available for granting. And then from there, I just keep a timeline of when I need to do press releases. The applications, I get online by the January 31st at the latest. The items in blue are OCCIT as far as when the applications are due, the review meeting, and kind of the process I go through after the meeting, including doing a press release and executing the agreements for each applicant that has awarded the grant. The red is the Metro Enhancement, the same for that, just a few months later. And then June through December, I just am supportive of those grants and in most cases, you know, giving them money and sending off money to them. And then we start the roll again, December 31st.
I have a question, probably one more directed at Wyatt, who he's not aware of yet. Somebody else can fill in the blanks. These two programs are funded by different sources. And I'm just wondering, are they in sync as to when the cutoff and when we know how much is available for granting?
Good question. I don't believe we're quite in sync with your approach. The House of Representatives comes in, I believe, quarterly into the Metro.
The tipping fees.
I don't know that we're entirely in sync. Probably what we do is look at what revenues are coming since that time, anticipate about the same as before, 50,000 to 90,000 for the city fee. Whether your questions are in sync, I think the thing is covering a little bit of timing.
And we've been pretty good at estimating how much is going to be, but we have to remember those are estimates.
Correct. Certainly if I'm wrong, Michelle, when we see those numbers that David Miller provided, those are actually the value of the money that had actually come in.
Yes, it's based on that funding.
And occasionally, we perhaps advanced a little bit, but we tried to get out of that phase, trying to allocate those monies that were already available to us. Occasionally, there was a strong feeling that another project should be funded, and we, I think occasionally, have advanced into that, that just be a little bit more common.
Well, and with OCCIT, these grant cycles typically run on the fiscal year, so July 1st through June 30th of the following year. With the OCCIT, we meet in March, in March 1st to April. And those groups do start accessing their funds right away, because most of the tourism things are, they're gearing up for. So from a budgeting standpoint, it's, the money's there, it just gets allocated in a different fiscal year. But then for Metro, any funding, any of the projects, the funding is not available till after July 1st. Does that make sense?
I understood, I thought about when it was available. I was wondering about when we are allocating, and I think Doug addressed it. We really don't know exactly how much we've got.
Yeah, it's based on, my understanding as David went through it is it's based on, you know, tracking it up until that point, December, when we sit down.
And that part for sure.
Yep. And then estimating for the next six months, based on where we were, and then looking also at the last few granting cycles.
And yeah, I was going to say, it's probably a combination of things, not to put two point, find a point on this, but one of them is comparing it to previous years and seeing if there's a trend up or down, maybe that's significant. And also is comparing what we've acquired so far compared to previous years.
Well, and when you talk about trending, obviously OCCIT is based on the room rate. And there, a couple of years ago, it was really, really high, while that's ended down. Additionally, with Metro, the tipping fees are dropping as well. And in both cases-
Because we're recycling more, right?
Yeah, exactly. But in both cases, I mean, we've seen that, you know, grants, where we've reported out that we're giving out 90,000, we've gone into contingency and funded additional grants. So, you know, we are going into our contingency to provide additional-
Do we have a percentage contingency that we're working with?
I don't know that. I'd have to get that answer for you later, but I don't-
When you say contingency, to me, contingency is money that you know you have, that you're saving, you're holding back. And I don't know if you're using it in anticipated monies that we have not yet received, which I think is different.
And Doug, that's a question that would have been for the finance-
Yeah, I suspect that contingency does refer to anticipated revenue.
Okay, so it's not something we're sitting on.
Correct. And if there's some rule of the committees to have a little bit of reserve set aside, that's something we can talk about.
It was my understanding that we did have some reserve set aside, that he would underestimate the amount that was going to come in, that was the total. And so then that next grant cycle, we already had a little buffer in there, because I know a couple of times, we dipped into that a little bit.
Well, in some places, there were grants that didn't, that got awarded.
Right, I was going to say some of it.
And for whatever reason, it will go through, and so it came back.
But that's risky. I guess it's like overbooking, you know? Hoping some of them are going to really do it.
Well, and in most cases, the majority of them go through, the projects get done, you know, we pay out their funds. And for whatever reason, there's a little quirk, and that project doesn't go through. And in some cases, it has to do with the permitting or, you know, the project.
Whatever, there's lots of reasons.
Yeah, whatever. But, I mean, probably, you don't want to assume that that's, there's going to be projects each year that are going to do that. So, you know, I believe David, you know, it was always a conservative figure to make sure. And then by the time we got to our meeting, either in May or in April, depending on which group, he had a much better idea of where the actual revenue stood, and could be able to say, well, you know, we can work with an extra 10,000 if needed.
Is there, is there anything that we would want to have clarified and sent to us in terms of how we've actually been operating, in terms of how? I mean, I thought one, and that actually, we tried to allocate monies that we had on hand, and sometimes, sometimes we advanced ahead, but that was done more frequently than earlier times, I think, we're doing it now.
So you're looking at clarification on-
Well, if maybe from last year, maybe you could talk to David, whether the monies that are presented to us or monies that are already on hand, do you know that?
I would say, I don't know that for sure, but I would say that, like I said, by the meeting time, we had a more defined number.
Yeah. And just to see if we had a predicted amount ahead of time in there, I don't know that he was operating quite that way. So, and maybe just send a memo to us all as to what the situation is, or was.
As to how David was estimating?
Yeah.
And then, okay.
And you're right, he estimated conservatively, which is why I suppose.
So, any other questions on the timeline? As far as a meeting date for each group, it is usually after the first of the year that I sit down and look at the calendar and figure out when the commission's meeting, and hopefully, there's a fifth week in there that I can sneak in a meeting because of scheduling. So, in looking at the calendar, I believe I put the OCCIT the first week of April, because the last week of March is a fourth week, and that is spring break. So, you don't have to worry about me during spring break.
The point just before this, Michelle, is this press releases to the OC News in Oregonia for both grant programs. I'm wondering if we can't do a little better job of reaching out to the community, other than just putting out the press releases. When I go around the neighborhood associations, and I go around a lot of them, I'll talk to all of them, and I try to remind everybody that there are these granting mechanisms. So many times, it just flies over their head. I think maybe if we had a little handout or something that we could at least give to the representatives of the CIC, that they could take back to the neighborhoods. But I think that more people really ought to know what's available. I mean, just to keep the program-
In a part.
Exactly.
Okay. Yeah, that's easy too.
Okay. Something on the timeline, you know, different projects are being, different when they come to completion. The expectation of the turning in of the report, in some cases, they're going to complete in a year, in other cases, it's a project that was on the outer yearly cycle. Does that identify as to how that happens and when the reports are expected to come back to you?
So, in the agreements that I send out to grantees, they, it says, you know, within 30 days of completion of the project. Well, and that gets done, then those get included in your packets when we meet each year. And I try to identify which grant year that was, because, you know, if we meet in April, there's still three months that a group could still finish up their project, and you, as grant members, aren't aware of what's out there and what they did. So, it does get included, there's just a lag time in it. Unless, you know, you want me to change that and get them out. But there is that in the contract, they do have to have that provided, and I do track that as well, so that next grant cycle, they, I can report on, and I used to do it on that spreadsheet, right, the financial spreadsheet, where I happy to, and what was paid out if they turned in an exit report.
I can't, it was on my calendar at City Hall, so I've been up at City Hall trying to get in.
Sorry.
I told him to record you as an unexcused absent. No, I knew you'd be here. I knew you'd be here.
I finally remembered I did have an excuse.
Well, I'll tell you something, I went to City Hall as well, and I don't know if you, have you met Wyatt? He's on a new partner.
Okay, I think I, have I?
Anyway, he was walking out of City Hall as I was walking up to it.
The bad news for you is I'd forgotten the Asian pears, so.
Marker is an unexcused absence.
So this is Charlotte Colette, she's the Metro Councilor and sits on the Metro Enhancement Committee.
My apologies for being late.
Well, we're going through discussing the timeline on how the grants are allocated, so that's too-
Yeah, and you were speaking of the exit report, so I provide those where I can, in your grant packets. If we can be done in a more timely manner, on a monthly basis, if you want something to come out sooner, so let me know.
So anything else on the timeline, questions? For that, we'll go on to the criteria, and we're starting with the Civic Improvement Trust project. You want to leave him to it, Michelle?
So, after each meeting the past grant season, both groups wanted to look at the criteria for granting. And I believe, I mean, OCCIT is fairly straightforward. It needs to be a tourism project heads in best. The Metro Enhancement is a little bit more expansive. So, based on that, I don't know how you want to proceed on discussion, if you want to do individual grant committees, and see if there's any changes on, or discussion items for changing criteria or adjusting criteria for OCCIT first.
I know Kathy Roth had one concern, and I think it probably would apply to both granting cycles, and that was some, the grant requests coming from the same individuals on the same projects year after year, and that was a concern of yours that one. And I think probably have them on both, in terms of the Civic Improvement Trust, of course, I think that's for the Antique Fair, so that's something. And then I think the High School Construction requires, it's come to us three or four times now, I believe, is on Metro Enhancement. So those are two of them that could be on.
And I think William suggested that we maybe advertise in a broader scope, we could eliminate that problem.
Well, I don't think we, I don't know if we'd eliminate the problem, because we've never had, we've never been able to fill everybody's grant requests. And so we'll, we'll be able to not fill more people's grant requests.
More applications that are quality, that are quality offering.
Well, and in your packets, I included for each grant group, OCCIT and Metro, there's a sheet on funding history. So, it shows, you know, which groups were funded, when they were funded, what the project was, and how much, and then a total for each year. So you were able to see where we've been, and where, you know, if you want to make stipulations on that, or just as-is.
Well, if we think that we're going to change the criteria there, we need to have sufficient advance notice. And also, I think we have to make some distinctions as to, I mean, I think this group is completely able to make decisions on the merit of the project, whether it's a repeating project or something. In the case of the Antique Fair, if they don't get the funding, there won't be an Antique Fair, because they just, it's, they look at the Antique as a revenue source, but what they actually in revenue corresponds roughly to the grantee. They get a lot of donations, but it takes things to put in for it. And if, in fact, you want to suggest that something gets phased out on a continuous basis, we should probably should have that discussion and talk about how that might happen.
I'd like to engage in that discussion with comment that we have another program, specifically the Hanging Baskets, that have been perennially funded. And maybe it's just my personal philosophy, but I would like to see grant programs as not so much as a continual source for an ongoing program. And I think that we were able to move the baskets in general fund. And I'd like to just explore, is there a possibility it was moving the Antique Fair into the general fund?
That'd be a decision of the commission. I want to go back to the history, I think the first year it was put on, it was a city project, and then the city, wasn't it? And the city asked the, it was not the first year?
Well, it's not currently a city-
No, 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 I'd say the first year. And then, I think the city requested the chamber to do the event.
So the chamber does the event, but they don't fund it? Is it entirely funded from this?
No, no, they get donations and everything else, but the cost, they regard it as a fundraiser, and the cost of it is sufficient that if it worked for the-
It doesn't raise funds.
It wouldn't raise funds. Yeah, I didn't touch it a lot.
And my definition is not even, yeah.
For most of the OCCIT groups, I see, and you'll see in their budget lines, a lot of it has to do with advertising. To be able to pay for advertising, because it's so expensive.
I think I agree that it should be oriented more towards seed money, startup kind of money analogous to that, rather than a perpetual funding source. So, you know, maybe putting on a four-year, two-year, three-year limitation on repeat grants.
Is it something that you want to make retroactive or not? Because if, if, if you want to make it retroactive, we, we let organizations know that that's the case.
Oh, you mean the years that they've done that are counting in that?
Yeah.
I don't know, that would be a subject for discussion. I think I'd be inclined to do so.
You could send a signal and say, we're going to start reducing funding, and in the future, you'll only be able to get funding for however many years you want to determine.
Would there be any exceptions to that, like for the Metro Enhancement, the High School Project?
I was saying exactly the same. The High School Project is, they buy the construction material, it's not a fundraiser, they're teaching the students how to do it.
It's a different group every time.
I think it is different, I agree.
It's a different project usually.
Well, I mean, that's the thing, you can argue both sides of this, and that's why I think I've always come back to, we have to weigh the projects against each other on that given year. And if, because, I mean, we may get repeat projects, but if they're the best projects, we should be funding them. And so I think that we have to look at it in that way. I guess one of, is this a general discussion of all the different topics of criteria, or is this one, or one of the-
This is one I know that, I know Kathy had brought up earlier, and so.
Couple of, couple of the other ones that I've, and we're getting better every year, it seems, but to me, the criteria still is not connected at all with the scoring. And that's always been a problem to me, because-
On the Metro side, you're saying?
I'd have to look at it and make sure. There's definite, definite projects where they fit the criteria, and then you score it, and it's really low, and you're like, wait a minute, that was, you know, it fits every criteria, and then some, it just doesn't match. The criteria, or the scoring doesn't, you're not scoring on the criteria. So, you have this criteria that they have to meet, but yet, it's not affecting the score at all.
Well, I think, we, it turns out I wasn't at that particular meeting, I was out of town, but we went through a process, I believe, where people spurred all the criteria high, and we took the total, and the result was that it got heavily skewed. I think, I mean, I think that's a cautionary note to us. It may fit one of the criteria very well, and the individual making the assessment may give it the five, just because of that one criteria. I think that's okay. On the other hand, they may, some people are very, very clever, and try to fit their proposals that fits all the criteria, but it may not fit it at all well, any of them well.
Well, one way that I thought of looking at it is, if you have the criteria, maybe even add more than five criteria, you know, have more specific criteria. And then you give a point for each criteria that it was met, and then also points if it's a new project, if you haven't seen it. That way, that might discourage people that come back every year and depend on the funding of the grant not to, because they will get less points for each time they apply.
I agree with that two-point. I think you could maybe expand on it. One of the things that I, you know, as somebody puts together projects, you know, spends capital dollars, you know, I look at what the return is going to be, particularly with regards to tourism. I think that the person doing the project, it's never more, you know, justification's never more than an educated guess, okay? But, you know, perhaps bringing that educated guess forward, you know, we estimate the Antique Fair is going to generate, you know, foot traffic of 10,000, and, you know, each person will spend $22 at local businesses, for example. So, you know, having some information like that, that's at least, you know, estimated with, you know, what did they use, what did they, how did they use these assumptions? And again, to your point, quantify, you know, did they meet the criteria? And, you know, what is our likely, I guess, I'm assuming that our goal is to bring business, tourism business in Oregon City, so.
And it's really hard to, it's really hard to show that, especially with the weekend event. But along the timeline, I think with OCCIT money, we do have to remember that it is specific for tourism, that means, is it bringing people into Oregon City that wouldn't normally come? Is it bringing people in that are spending the night? And if it's not, it really, it really doesn't fit. And I, so much of it, Michelle was talking about how so much of it is kind of, a lot of the projects are asking for OCCIT money to kind of subsidize their, their marketing budget, which I think is fine, if it's being marketed outside of Oregon City. But buying it out of the Oregon City News, that doesn't do it. And I know we are funding that kind of stuff, so I think we, I think we need to be careful about that too. So the detail of how we really know if this is bringing people in, because just marketing it to people in Oregon City isn't showing that our money's bringing, you know, if we're advertising out, if they're advertising specifically out beyond Oregon City or Clackamas County, then I could see that being more of a use.
Not all, but in most, yeah, I've seen invoices come through for the Oregon City News, for the Oregonian, but there's also the Clackamas County Tourism Board that they work through and get ads in.
They do, yeah. And they don't do joint ads too, and most, a lot of those are outside of the county.
But having, but having caused that justification of, you know, here, here's my projection, here are the things that I use to reach this assumption, at least allows us a view into their thought process, and see if we think it's in or not. And again, it would bring, to your point, it would bring up, you know, Oregon City News, that's not going to cut it. Which is a good point. I remember when we did a car club, or something, the car thing, and they're going to put billboards out on I-205, that's, okay? You know, that's, that's better than the Oregon City News. So, you know, I think, again, you know, does it meet the criteria? And, you know, what is, how can you project the payback? And I don't think it's really that difficult to measure. I mean, you know, you can have somebody stand out and say, hey, are you going to spend the night and take a sampling, and probably get a fairly decent representative sampling at something like Antique Fair. So it is doable.
I think they do that.
Yeah.
And I know that Chicken Racy Car Club this year, he was explaining, they did an informal polling during the car show downtown, and were able to get numbers as to where people-
I'd for one would like to have that information.
Okay, and that's definitely on the exit reports.
You know, feed us, you know, justification, how the dollars are expected.
One of the points that I addressed in my book, the last time we were together, is that over the years, I think, we voted for a lot of tremendous projects, but they're one and done. You come in for a weekend, you come in for one day of a weekend. I have seen very few projects come through that I would call add to the tourist or tourism Exhibits.
Signage.
You know, those kind of things that put, that fill motel rooms, in essence, that's kind of, and serve meals, and get people to come to Oregon City all other times of the year. And this is, and we're, this is what I see as a part that's lacking. Now, in the criteria, I don't know how you would do it. In some other organizations I'm with, they would fund, in other words, there is a, an agreement written that, let's say that 15% of the proceeds would be reserved for those funds that go into a infrastructure need. There, you know, there are different things. Or you might get a bonus point in the ranking system if you're into an infrastructure need to try to put hospitality on the front burner over the long haul. And I'm not finding any fault within the project, except that in my mind, they're one and done, they're not building anything that next year, we have something to build on and attract more visitors to Oregon City. You know, and I, as I brainstormed and thought for this meeting, how could you accomplish? Well, I didn't go all through the verbiage about the grant, it's the trust itself. I don't know if that's limited by the trust. I don't know if that's a decision this group can make. But there has to be a way to- I don't know if that's a decision this group can make, uh, but there has to be a way to, in my mind, there has to be a way to encourage and reward the applicants that are going to put some, in an infrastructure need for the long haul. For example, I'm just pulling this out of last year's cycle, uh, the, the interpreting center, the work that was trying to be done down there, is someone, is work, as I saw it, that would try to attract, attract tourists to Oregon City on the long haul.
Ongoing.
Ongoing attraction. Those are the ones that you attract from a larger area and those are the ones that are most likely to spend the night in the motels and buy the meals and buy the dinner. And, and like I say, they're more than just one and done. And I don't know how we go about that. But that is a concern I have had, it's a concern I voiced. If we're redoing criteria and we're redoing, that's one of the things that I would like to put on tape.
Yeah, well, yeah, I think that's a very good point. And going back to the ranking system, you know, with the ranking sheet, that could be one of the things. You know, you would get a point for that. You would get a point for outside advertising, for, you know, advertising outside of the city. And then all these things you would get points for. That's, on the metro enhancement forum, that was one of the questions I always had is, you know, the rankings seem kinda arbitrary, because you might give it a five because you felt it weighted heavy in one of the areas. But what about the projects that met criteria? If they would've, if you would just put a point for each of those in each of that category, then it would get a five. So are we focusing more on just being heavy in one category? Or are we looking at ones that are well-balanced projects that meet all the criteria? I think that's what we need to figure out.
You're gonna have better, my personal opinion is you're gonna have better luck in finding projects that are gonna be heavy in an area that they have some comparative expertise in, rather than trying to be an all-purpose general, you know, make everybody happy type of project. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't be looking for, um, trying to hit every objective. I would be looking for somebody that gets one or two objectives really well.
So maybe a one through five for each of, say, if there's five criteria, we can rate them one through five, what we think, and that, and that becomes their rating?
Yeah. My, my concern is a lot of that, you know, I guess there's advantages and disadvantages of objectivity and subjectivity. If we go with points, you know, the whole thing is very black and white, you know, and you don't need us making decisions. I mean, just put it in a spreadsheet and you've got your answer.
Well, the subjectivity comes in if you had a, you know, you could rate each criteria one through five, but it forces the thought process on us rather than just making a decision, oh, that's cool.
So how heavy is it in each criteria? Is it a one or is it a five?
So out of those, they might have a score of 25, maybe a score of one through five. So what it does is it forces a process on us to kinda, you know, we have, we can be subjective, but you know, we can't just arbitrarily kinda...
I don't wanna go back to the top, that one situation where somebody scored everything on the criterias all fives and they're taking the total criterias and that one individual skewed the whole thing.
Yeah.
But the points, it got approved, but it, it, it got, I, somehow, I think this is where we have to operate somewhat individually. I mean, if you, if you see they make this one criteria and it's an excellent project, I think, I think you should be able to call it a five if you think it's so good in that one category that it's better than somebody else's that's in several other categories.
Well, there's another, there's another technique that we could use, we could just discuss it, is to, say you've got a total number of points that you can allocate over all the projects.
Yeah.
You can't give them all fives. You've got a total, you've got this many beans and you can give this many no beans and, and you have to allocate your, your, your beans.
That's, that's good.
Well, basically, what you'd be doing is setting your own set of priorities, where you'd say, this is number one, this is number two, this is number three.
And then proportionally attribute points as you saw by your criteria.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Or just rank them and, I mean, you'd have to have some scoring.
But the point is, you'd, you'd only be allowed so many points.
Exactly.
Yeah. So which group would like a percentage where if there's, if you rated everyone fives, that would be 100 points, or we say you only have 75? Or you only have 50 points in beans, if you use?
Well, I think that you could say, you've got 50 beans to use. And if you wanna put them all in one project, well...
But the, but the point is, if you have six projects one year and 10 projects the other one, you sort, you have to allocate the beans somehow. Make a percentage of the total beans that we can, we can use. I like this beans.
You can maximize the number of beans per project. So regardless of how many projects, so you, so you've got 10 beans for every project.
What does bean count?
Did you do that whole process for the Carnegie Center? Remember the sticking the dots?
Yeah.
I'm putting in saccharine.
People had tennis sheets and they were sticking all these stickers on one thing.
Um, let me make sure I understand you right. You've got X number of points that you can award over all the projects and you have to choose how you award those points. You could get all 10 in the one, uh, or do otherwise. I guess, I mean, I guess this approach could be used.
Well, it would, I would say two things. One was it, it may vary, how many points you have to distribute, or beans if you prefer, really does depend on how many projects you have. So if you only have five projects to evaluate, maybe you don't need 100 beans. If you have seven projects, maybe you need more. We ought to be able to say, well, there's, there's a ratio to how many beans you need per project. And then once you find out how many you've got, so let's say you've got 50 beans in five projects, it's up to you as to how you wanna distribute those beans. And if you wanna put 10 beans on each project, well, okay.
I think what is the problem that we had that one time? Because you're, you're gonna, you're gonna avoid your X number of beans. So you're gonna have, you're gonna be awarded a total number of beans and you're expected to award a total number of beans.
Exactly.
So we're all gonna be, we're all gonna be giving the same amount of points.
You have to use all your beans.
You have to use all your beans.
And you can't get more beans.
No beans. Right, you have beans.
So, so the point I was taking about the percentage, so let's, you know, if you have 100 beans, you know, and you say you're gonna get 50% of the total beans, you could vote, you know, that would be an average of two point, if you equalized them, it'd be 2.5 on a rating of one through five. That would be my choice. So, you know, I can make some things a five and some things a zero, but, you know, then that's flexible across all of the, you know, the varying number of projects we're gonna have over the years.
You know, the other, the other advantage of using beans as opposed to two points is, well, not, not only that, no, seriously, is that we, we do sometimes read things as a 2.5, something like that, where you can't cut your beans out.
Unless they're cooked.
That's what's the 2.5, right there.
Yeah. Get off the dime, it's either a two or a three, you know? So that's, that's...
Yeah, but it's not. I mean, I don't, I don't think it is sometimes, especially if you're dealing with, especially when we had one through five and we had five...
One through five was too small.
You know, um, right. So that caused, you know, the only way I could separate them is by doing it in more increments, because there, there wasn't a way for me to do it with five beans.
Can we sell our beans to the...
No. You can't trade them either.
Wouldn't want, wouldn't the, well, I'm listing all beans, I'm listing these numbers, you know, I'm like, whoa. Wouldn't the same thing be accomplished, so, well, probably wouldn't. But would, couldn't the same thing be accomplished, for example, if you had 10 projects, every member of the committee had to rank those projects 10 through 1?
That's what I was saying.
And then simply...
Average ranks.
Average the rankings.
Or just the, the, if you made a ranking, the smallest number...
Frank, the y'all could have 1,000 beans if you want to, because I'm walking away, but I'm thinking, I wouldn't wanna deal with that.
So everyone's number one would have, get so many, I mean, so my number one, yeah, what, number one in my list would be the same, I mean, would get the same, and then they would...
Well, on the other hand, if, if, let's say that your top project, you awarded it 10 points, your next project would be a nine, your next would be an eight, your next would be a seven.
So you reverse them.
And so forth down the line. And so the, the least project in the group in your vision would be the one. Well, someone else may flip-flop all those and you average the group and you probably would have a relative, pretty good relative picture of what folks think of, are thinking.
Maybe that's easier.
That's certainly an easier way of doing it. What, the only thing that it doesn't really do is say, if you had, that's imagining that, that those would step up or down, depending on which way you went, from 10 to 1 or 1 to 10, in a relative fashion. And yet you may have two that are really outstanding, and I guess you could say, well, those are, those are gonna float to the top anyway.
Well, then in a citizen empowered committee, that's where the citizens on the committee might have to have a little politicking going on to get them both funded or all funded. I mean, you can't take the human factor out of the decision.
Right.
But doesn't, don't we use those numbers also to determine the amount of funding? Not just whether or not...
We, 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 we tried, well, we found in our system is you find these things grouped out and you might find the same thing in the, in the average ranking. And so, so you find the average ranking and you got, you got three of them that are, say, 4.2, 4.3, 4.6, something like that, and you're funny, you're funny to cut right into them and there really wasn't that much difference. And so we tried to actually bring that down to a point where, where you had this grouping that everybody in the group could fall in, so we tried to talk, to ask people then, would they be able to cut a little bit? And generally, they have been able to, so we've been able to fund more projects that way. But the intent there was where you, you have a clustering of scores and they're really close to each other. Can we get that whole cluster up since it is, you know, well, I'm a statistician, but margin of error, maybe they weren't that different, because switching another member with somebody else and one of those others would float to the top, for example. So we, we've done that. I mean, just by, and, and most, most people are willing to say, yeah, well, we can, we can, we can accept X.
Most are happy to get something other than nothing.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So that, and that seems, that seems to work. So that, and that's, that could still probably be done, where we see a bunch of them have real close scores and yet the, and they could cut off those right in, in the middle of those scores.
So for clarification, is this something that you're considering for both groups?
I don't know why we couldn't do it for both groups. I mean, does anybody think why the groups might be distinguished in that regard?
As far as the ranking methodology, they, why not?
Yeah.
So if we have 15 applicants, you would rank them in your order 1 to 15?
Right.
And number one would get 15 points?
Or it's probably easier to just say, everybody give, rank them 1 to 15 and smallest, or you don't have to average them, just add each...
Add them all up.
Yeah, and, and, so the smallest number is your number one, 'cause that means that that got, that one got more ones and twos, whatever. So it would be sort of reverse logic, but it's a little bit easier numerically to say, your number one choice is number one.
That's in the, that's in the ground rules going in, so everyone understands the system.
Yeah, so you don't have to average, you just add up and you, the, the smallest number is the top ranked, the next smallest number is the bottom.
Yeah, you get the same rank, you get the same rank.
It's rank.
Yeah. And you just operate off the totals for the total ranks.
Right. And then you can, within that, that gives you sort of the top choice projects. Then you get down to, gee, we could move another project in if all of you are willing to take a little bit less.
Yeah.
You do that kind of...
So how could we incorporate the idea for bringing criteria into...
Well, then we establish our ranking based on our interpretation of their ability to meet the criteria. So you could, we could do, you know, our own sort of merit or whatever. We could say, this is really great at this criteria, not so great at that. We can either do that by actual numbers, and I don't know how much you need to have for the record, Michelle, but you could either do that...
I think it would be great in the process if we were all kind of following...
It gives, I mean, it gives individuality to what we're doing. I mean, like I said, if there was, if you thought it was a great project, it was written, it only fills one of the criteria, but it's a great project, you're still gonna rank it 15 if you wanted it, or 1, whichever you're, whichever, we gotta make clear what it is.
But you're always gonna have a 1, you're not always gonna have a 15, so let's say make that a 1.
Right, so let's start with your number one project, yeah.
You didn't, it only fit one criteria, but you thought, gee, it's a great project. And you could give it a 1, if you, if that's how you felt about it. And, and I think, I think that individual decision-making is a good thing, really. I, I think the requirement is you can't give a rank of one and a half to one and one and a half to another. I mean, it has to be, they all have, you have to go through the complete struggle.
Yep.
You gotta go through the struggle.
Big numbers only.
You got, you got two of them you think are...
No fractions.
The same, you, you gotta make, you gotta make a decision.
No ties.
No ties.
No half points, Rob.
No half points.
I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do.
So can I ask another clarifying question?
Well, how much we got to... Giving a half point isn't a tie.
No, if you rank two of them, one and a half, it's...
Well, yeah, obviously, but I wouldn't, I mean, yeah.
Yeah. As I said, we don't do, we won't, we won't give them half.
I mean, I use the half points to break the ties.
Well, the...
Well, that's why you do it, but you're gonna be forced to actually rank them, I think, if not using...
Well, which is fine if you have more than five points.
Right. If you're ranking, you're instead of just assigning points, yeah, exactly. So we usually turn these, the rankings in ahead of time, so it becomes a point of discussion once we start the meeting. So after that, then it's to your discretion if you so choose to ask applicants questions. Is there going to be a reranking?
There could be.
There could be, I don't know what, I mean, I...
Like we've done in the past.
We could have done that, sure.
Yeah, sometimes hearing the project described this might change your vote, might change your ranking.
We wanna put that ranking up at the beginning and, and make that public, or we wanna have our initial and then hold back?
They, they see it at the beginning.
Okay. Is that what we wanna do?
Well, yeah, but don't you think the questions should come first and then if everyone, if everyone's great with their ratings, the way, I mean, we give the ratings to you, they're on the computer, we have the questions and discussions, and if we at some point during that time wanna change our rankings, then we, we can before they go up on the board, but I don't know without putting them up on the board and then having...
Yeah, that's why I asked.
And then having the discussion. Oh, yeah, now, I've, now I've heard yours, I think, I'm gonna take those and up. I don't think we wanna do that.
You know, three to eight.
That's what the council's doing, but I agree that, I mean, that's how we have been doing it, but I like, I like not, not putting the ranking up.
They wanna go for recess or whatever you can be, something.
Well, this may be a little bit problematic, quite difficult, because we submit our rankings and is there a mechanism where we can, each one of us individually key in a change in the ranking as we have our discussion? Now that, I mean, it could be done, but I don't know whether it...
Yeah, that would be something I'd have to talk with Nancy about.
Put it on the Google Doc, you know, and we'll just take our phones and change them on the line.
But, but it's gotta be stored and averaged somewhere, I mean, there's gotta be a...
Oh, Google Doc.
Yeah, okay.
Besides, we'd get to use, do software, it was a new trick.
Well, what if we don't submit our rankings? We just have our ranking as our own notes and then during the meeting we rank.
Put them in after discussion.
We could do that.
Well, you should, you should have your rankings there ahead of time, because if you're gonna make a decision there, let's say you have 15 projects, it'll take forever and a day to, I mean, we're gonna be hours trying to...
It's a discipline.
I think my, my suggestion is, yes, you submit your rankings, maybe it's not known to anybody what they are, but you have them there. The only person that knows about them is Michelle.
And I can already have them on the screen.
She can have them there. Then you can change them.
But I can make changes.
She can make changes, but you're committed to having the 1 through 15 there already.
Yeah.
Presumably, you're not gonna change a 15 to a 1, I mean, that's probably not gonna happen.
You're right.
Yeah.
That'll avoid people, you know, putting it off to the last minute.
Yeah.
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 You don't want the last minute.
It works really well for me.
We do that anyways.
I get it done by lunch that day.
Done.
Exactly. But there is, you know, by not putting the numbers up first, and by sort of quietly leaving, you know, there's a little, we lose a little transparency, and I don't know if that's, if that's okay or not, if that matters to anybody, that people don't come in seeing the numbers up right away.
I would prefer that they didn't see the numbers right away, just because that can give false hope, and I hate to disappoint people.
Yeah, that's the worst of it, is if you, if you drop them after they come up and talk, then, then they feel responsible for having lost the grant money. So I'm cool.
Go ahead.
I have a question about, okay, so where you decide after we need to change our ranking, so do we take an eight and make it a two, and make the two be eight, or do we, everybody drop down?
That's your decision. That's your individual decision. How you want to do it.
And that could be a recess time.
I mean, that, that would happen to you only if you found out that one was really allowed to fly. You're probably going to be in, in your two or three ranks together, where you're going to be actually making those kinds of decisions.
And I think it's pretty rare that we're changing, I mean, I think there's, you know, maybe one time I thought about maybe changing it a little bit, that, or I didn't, or I didn't feel like ranking them until I heard the answer to the question. I mean, there's some that I didn't want to rank at all until I had the answer to a specific question, and then I, then I ranked them, but I don't know, there's a ton of changes.
Or sometimes we'll get new information at the table that, that you think, oh, wow, that changes things, but, so we might just have a separate ranking form at the table that we could then hand you for recess, change our votes, yeah.
Having more specific questions, too, I think would alleviate a lot of that, you know, like what Rocky was saying, like what you were saying.
Beforehand, on the.
On the, as the criteria, yeah, on the process, just having very specific questions so that we have all the information beforehand.
I'm going to suggest that it shouldn't be that complicated. No, you have, you, well, you, we all could have this individual spreadsheet, your spreadsheet that you could change, and she could see your spreadsheet. Rather than handing her something, I, I don't think it should be programmatically that difficult to do it.
You mean, doing like a recess or something?
Yeah, we take, take a break, or, and, and we could enter them in, I guess we could excuse everybody that made presentations while, while we made changes. I would suggest doing that, if we're, if we're hanging pieces of paper to write the paper while people are there, and it's awkward, we could go ahead, hear them, dismiss people, make the changes we want to, and then call them back in. Now, they haven't seen the original, they haven't seen the original rankings, so that's not going to affect them.
Right.
We, we ask them questions, we talk to them, we have the dialogue, then, and we have to have a meeting where this will work, but then we excuse everybody, and then we could go ahead and.
Isn't that all, Phil?
Well, it's all public, we can't, we can't make decisions while they're on the room, right? Is that how that works? I mean, we, we have the discussion with people there, we just, we can each make our own suggestion.
But then they call back, and then the, the results are reported back to them, so you're making your own individual changes.
Right.
Yeah.
And then we.
You're making your own individual decisions, but you're.
And publicly, we still, in, in an open meeting, we still have the discussion with them about changing or bringing this down.
And we can't think all the discussion is while they're there. When they're, when they're excused, we're simply doing our reranking.
Except the ranking.
Huh?
Except the ranking. Yeah, the ranking. I mean, that's, that wouldn't be part of the discussion, saying, I'd like to ask you a question, because right now, you're a number seven.
No, 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 no. No, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, we're having a discussion about their proposal, while we think about it. We excuse them, we change our rankings, we're not discussing it among ourselves, I think, and then we go ahead and, and submit them, and then we perhaps go through the same thing we did before, we see how they group out, and maybe we get people to cut a little bit so we get more projects, yeah.
Excuse me for just thinking a little boldly, is that, it doesn't seem to me as we're the only community that ever distributes grants, I'm just wondering.
We know somebody here who is involved in that, P D, I mean, what, yeah, I don't hear any comments from you on that. You're one of the best people to make comments.
I work for my trust, so we have a different process than this, and it's actually much more closed, but we never share results until after discussion, and research happens first. Actually, listening, you said there's some that you don't rank because you don't have answers to questions. If there is a pattern of what those questions are, we try to include this definitely in the criteria ahead of time, and you mentioned that, too, and in the ranking forms. Yeah, it's, our process is very different.
Well, but what do you think of the process we're discussing, even though your process is very different? I mean.
I think the ranking works really well. It's always going to be subjective.
Sure.
In a way. But I think adding all the comments to the ranking forms, so the individual, when you're sitting down, ranking them, that works. I would also keep them private until, and make the changes, and not have everyone see what we did last time. I mean, I think the, the recommendations that are being raised at the table now, so like, they really make sense in terms of improving how it's working here.
Is it important to have the ranking by, with our names? Or just have a sheet up that says, these are, these are the project rankings based on the scores?
This is something I think she, you know, we have our own spreadsheet. We don't see those people's spreadsheets, she, she has all of them there.
But what we've done in the past is project, yeah, we've projected all of our scores and all of our ranking with our names.
Yeah, yeah, but that provides transparency.
Exactly, so that's what I'm saying, do we want, do we keep that?
I don't have a problem with that, actually. In fact.
I think it's a good thing.
I'd rather not do it prior.
Not put it up until after we've had each of them that's coming.
Well, we're all individual decisions, all of the decisions that our names go on.
Yeah. I think also, we need to emphasize to everybody applying that they need to be there. I think there's, there's, it's really a problem when there's not.
I just send those out.
Okay, because I, I think some, a couple of times, people have said, well, there's nobody here to, you know, I'll speak to it, but I'm not official, and, and I think they, if they know they have to make a presentation, or at least come in and defend their project.
The letter I do send out to each applicant is that, here's the meeting date, your, I don't say, well, I strongly suggest you be there, is I know how I word it, you strongly suggest you be there to answer any questions the committee may have of your project. You don't have to give a formal presentation, I do note that, there's no formal presentation because otherwise, you know, we could be there all night, but be there to ask, to answer any questions that are asked of your project.
And not being there may in fact negatively affect.
Yeah, I, I think rather than say, we strongly recommend you're there, that if you're not there, it could affect whether or not you get any money, period.
Yeah.
The other thing.
Please be at the meeting to answer questions.
Yeah.
And a positive one.
I think we, and a lot of the same lines of people not being there, I think we have, did we at the last meeting, or the last discussion, where we kind of, last year, I know we had some of these same issues, but I think we resolved the deadline issue, right?
Yeah, yeah, we didn't have any issues with the deadline issue by putting, putting it at a 5:00 p.m. deadline.
Right, and then we had issues in the past with missing elements, letters, et cetera. So we addressed, did we address that, too, I think, right?
Yeah, I review each application and make sure that they have the information provided. Now, the, the one piece that's still, you know, it's part of the grant information, is you need to go to city departments and find out about your project. And that is one thing, piece that's kind of hard to, to follow, because in some cases, the projects are fairly nebulous at that point, and they haven't fully defined it and know what, which department they need to go to, and what's supposed to be done. So.
Well, and that, and that may or may not lead to the department having to take some, to, I mean, are they just saying, they're just, what you're looking for, for each, the department is, each department does have a sign-off that, yeah, we're okay with this, especially if it affects anything on city property, et cetera, but I would hate to get it to a point where the city departments were having to make a decision on three different projects that are coming to them, and having to, to write letters for them or support, and how to, how to, how they deal with, you know, that, because they're not going to be the ones, they're really signing off on it, not supporting or.
Well, they do, they do get, they do get a large amount of support.
No, I know they do, but, but I think sometimes that may be a problem if there's multiple projects where they have, you know, I, I don't know.
You need projects to go into the same department.
Right, I mean, is a department going to say, well, yeah, I mean.
I like this one, saying I'm going to write a better letter.
Right, I, I don't know.
I presume they're going to have letters.
Especially when, but especially when the project is coming from a department, and some of these projects do.
Well, we've been trying to, we've been trying to pull that back.
Right.
We have been saying.
So it becomes less of an issue, but.
I could, I could tell you that I do send out to department heads, the grants that are being, are better up for review.
Right.
And ask if they have any comments to get back to. And, like, last, last year for Metro, I didn't have any. And so, that, that mechanism is in place, it's not a, a sign-off, per se, by each department head, it's, you know, let me know if there's something.
Right, right.
But part of it, too, is as a grant applicant, when you fill out grants, you're expected to do so many things, and one of those things in our information is, you need to find out if you, you know, you've got to go to building, and you've got to go to planning, if it's going to affect your project.
No, I think it should, I'm not saying that, I'm just making.
I just want to throw this out there, see if anyone else is uncomfortable with this. I'm feeling a little bit uncomfortable having city personnel to recommend, make recommendations on these things.
They don't make recommendations.
But they do write letters.
But they do write letters.
You write, oh, that's true.
Yes. And I'm a little uncomfortable with that, because I don't feel that the city itself should be involved in that part of the process.
Well, I guess, I guess the thing is, sometimes there are projects on their property, and if you don't, if you don't get feedback, you know, I don't know how you, I, I don't, I don't think you should make that the criteria of accepting it, it's just a simple fact that the city, the city staff went ahead and said, this is a good project, and we support it. The person may, I mean, the person looking for a project may have been backed onto a department, says, we want to do something, we're thinking of finding a grant, is there, is there a project that you might put forward that, that the city really has a need for? I, I guess I don't have a problem with the city, the city staff providing a recommendation on it.
See, I do a little bit, and what I, what I can see in place of that is just a check form, does it match, or, you know, is it, is it going to work, or is it not, yes or no, rather than a letter saying.
Support.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe that's a good idea.
I think it would be useful, though, if they are supposed to call and get a sign-off from the city, particularly if it's on the city property, or whatever that works, that the application includes some contact people and phone numbers, so they kind of know who to go to, at least.
Who needs to report.
Yes, who, who needs to sign off, I mean, you, you might not, there might be just a couple of key people, not real gone all the way to the staff person, but just to get them started, so, especially if that's going to be one of the, kind of, the gateway criterion, that you've got to have this letter in your packet, it's got to be checked off, should be, at least let them, give them some idea of where to go, because some of these people, this is the first time they've applied, some of the, the neighborhoods are getting more sophisticated, but some of them, it's the first time they've applied for a grant, giving them a little bit of help with how to do it is probably a good idea.
Well, and I think, too, that the department should know what's coming down the pipe.
Yeah, so I like.
That, that, you know, the parks department, they need to know that, you know, possibly bill at the park, and I think it's important to communicate that. And we do have groups that do do that ahead of time, and, and the construction class, they, Mr. Tucker does bring their kids to pack and get sign-off first, before he even goes through the application to us, but we've had instances where there's been projects that have gone through, and it's after the fact that departments have to deal, and make it work.
I'm just noticing the flow of the discussion has sort of gradually shifted away from the, from ranking, and I just like to make sure.
So, does anybody agree with.
I have some other topics, I like to talk.
Yeah, does anybody agree with your ranking, right there? I mean, is that straightforward?
Yeah.
Okay, direction, then go ahead and proceed with that.
In both programs.
For both programs, yeah.
I have, I have one niggly little question, and, and one that might be a bomb. No, the little one is, I, I just heard that magic time, four o'clock, and I know we went through this before, five o'clock, and, and yet, have some of the staff hours shut off at four o'clock? The offices are open till five, that's what I want to make sure of.
Right, the, City Hall is open, the front desk is open till five.
Okay, that's all.
The reason, yeah, and, and five is, in the past, it was, people would still be running in, at five o'clock, literally, doors automatically lock.
Yeah, 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 okay, that's fine, that's fine, I just, because I've known that, some staff has gone to four o'clock, I know.
Yeah, yeah, and in my case, and, and there's always somebody at the reception desk, if I'm not there that day, that they take them in at times.
That was a little question, thank you. Here's another one, and this is, this is way outside the box, but it's, it's something that, that I would like to discuss, and that is, that there has been an issue, a very serious issue, and I'm wondering if we have the means to ameliorate part of the problem. The problem specifically is that of trees uprooting sidewalks. Trees uproot sidewalks, there's a, there's a whole cascading history of why they were done, and city's responsibility, but the property owner's responsibility to pay for it, and I'll listen on that. And the thought occurred to me that it could be possible for hardship situations where the person cannot afford to have their sidewalk replaced, and they can document that through whatever means could be done, that the city could earmark a portion of, and I would think it's probably a metro enhancement, because it doesn't have anything to do with tourism, a portion of those monies could be set aside, that people that find themselves in that situation, being unable to afford to remedy a problem that they didn't cause, but they're responsible for doing, they could appeal to that as a grant.
I would make a different kind of suggestion, and my suggestion would be, if the city had basically a loan program, and if they're really in that kind of a situation, like so many things that, you know, can be put on your property, when you, if property's sold, you get the money back, as opposed to having, using the metro, I mean, there's a, for one thing, as long as you don't have to make the decision how much, and then, if you go to a whole bunch of people asking for it, then you have to make a decision of how to rank them, and I don't know if you want to be in that position, I would think a far better thing would be, in fact, to, we, we loaned money before, and then we gave some interest back, and usually the interest is relatively small, we've done that for Southport, it was interest that we wouldn't get, but, so it was a benefit to us, but it's the interest rate that Southport couldn't get from anyone else.
Exactly.
And so, so, you know, we, we have reserves and so forth, where maybe those kinds of loans could be made, and, and, and I would, I would recommend that, maybe as an item, maybe for a goal-setting session with the city commission.
Okay, that's fine, I, I just didn't know if that would fall under the criteria, but if there's another method, I just think, something ought to be done, for those people that can't afford to do that, and they're required to.
And.
It's like unfended mandates, you know, that you're supposed to do.
Right.
And it makes the city look fair.
Rocky? Do you need Michelle here, or do you need to speak?
I usually do, okay.
She'll pay, she'll pay attention, we.
This is a, a topic that has been a discussion at another meeting, that I thought maybe I would mention now, not sure that it affects O C C I T grants at the moment, but. Not sure that it affects OCCIT grants at the moment, but in the future it might. And, and that is the Oregon City Tourism Council that exists in the city, which is represented by myself for the city and multiple, basically, all the heritage sites in the city, lodging sites, business, chamber, downtown. Um, is a, is a council that deals with the TAP money from the county, Tourism Action Plan. So the city, the, the city Tourism Council creates a Tourism Action Plan. They get, you know, generally twenty thousand dollars about from the county, similar to our room tax, similar to our OCCIT funds. And at that council, we've had similar conversations, you know, how to open the grants to more people, how to build on, you know, the, the tourism infrastructure rather than one-day kind of events, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There's so many parallels with what the Oregon City Tourism Council does with OCCIT that I wonder if it wouldn't be possible to interact in some way as together, or, I'm not, I, I don't know really how to say this, but I, I think they're doing the same job, essentially.
Redemption is the word.
Um, and, uh, I think that there might be a way to bring those together in a way that's a little bit more cohesive. Um, and actually, I think in doing so, might actually be an easier target for us to hit some things. Because the Tourism Action Plan is very specific about, these are the things that Oregon City wants to focus on in tourism. And so there is some pretty strict guidelines that any of the projects come to us, need those. Uh, so it's even a, a little bit more specific criteria than OCCIT. And it's the same people asking for the money, generally, or the same organizations. And to me, the closer that we get to having all these, all these organizations and groups that are going to get the money, working together to decide to some degree how it goes, um, you know, to avoid, to avoid the infighting to some degree between individual attractions, because, because honestly, I think what's, what's, to some degree, what, what leads to the one-day project, get my grant and be done with it, is because these organizations are all competing for these, these little pieces of money, rather than saying, what can we all do as a group to bring people into Oregon City, period? And so the approach that the Oregon City Tourism Council has been making is, okay, we're going to decide where this twenty thousand dollars is, and everyone at the table's going to agree. And it, it's got to be unanimous, period. And, and, um, that means that it's not any, any individual project that is outweighing another. It's, it's how are we, you know, using this money in the best interests of the whole? So it, it's definitely been a similar topic that we've had here. I don't know if it would be possible to even have some, a meeting even with the two groups to even have this kind of a discussion of how that might be connected in the first few. I'm not necessarily even saying that it could go from anything to just sharing ideas, I guess, to somehow bringing those two groups together at some point. I don't know. So I leave that as a discussion to see if you have any input on that. Um, because I think what's happening is we get all these groups to compete for these, this money, and they're, you know, kind of focusing on their own projects rather than really the question that both these money pots are supposed to be doing, which is bringing people into Oregon City, period. Not just focusing on, you know, little teeny projects. Um, you know, we have some major, um, some major gaps in how we deal with tourism in Oregon City. I mean, we have the Amtrak station where you get off the train, there's no one there. There's nothing there to tell people where to go from there. Um, you know, so spending, you know, a bunch of tourism money on a couple of one-day projects doesn't fix the problem. Looking at it as a whole group and saying, these are the things that the city is really lacking, um, in terms of signage from, you know, the freeway to these places. There's some great signage once you get into Oregon City, but you can't find how to get, you know, so we've had these same, same discussions, and, and it might be neat to just have these two groups just to get together that have at least a general conversation about how they might interact in some way. Just a thought.
Just to let everybody know that Rocky probably is. We're older than they are. We, we had our taxes before they did.
Oh, OCCIT?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think the general goal is absolutely spot on of having coordination for a common goal of enhancing tourism. I would want to go back and read the, read the grant definition for OCCIT to see, are there some limitations to that?
Oh, I'm sure there is, yeah.
Well, I think, what I have noticed, I'm kind of a newbie at some of this stuff, but...
And not a newbie in some of this stuff.
But it, the signs of cooperation were completely broke down. And it became, the heritage, many times the heritage community became a struggle within itself. It's its own worst enemy in itself.
Oh, yeah.
And maybe it would take the nuclear auspices of an invitation from the city or someone, uh, on, just, just get people in the same room and talk together, because I'm telling you, I hear both sides every occasionally, and, and these, we're not talking to each other, let alone one another.
Well, and we, we, we seem to make progress, and then something happens and it goes back, and we, we, I feel like in the last year, we've made a lot of progress. But we, we just have to keep at it, because I, I think...
Well, let's go ahead and explore the box, because we're going to have to, we do want to make sure that we get everything...
Yes.
...everywhere.
Maybe that's a broad enough subject that Metro could be involved, because it's bigger, you know, you're talking about bringing people in from outside the city.
Well, in the county, it's county, bigger programs.
That's what I'm saying.
So that's the source of money that you're talking about, these guys, right?
Yeah.
Oh, it's county dollars, okay.
Yeah, dollars. So maybe if we had, you know, a bigger organization that could get a bigger view of the whole gestalt there, that they might...
Yeah, the TAP money is essentially the county's version of the OCCIT. It's their, their room taxes coming to the various cities or the various communities.
What I, what I suggest, Rocky, is one day, maybe, maybe talk to Michelle and David to find out whether we bring in, I don't think that should guide our conversations.
Right.
For, for the city here.
Absolutely.
So, um, were there any other major topics that we had? We seem to deal with the ranking issue. And I want, I want to come back, because I think we need to make some kind, it gives some kind of direction, but not a specific decision, on the question of the same project coming up year after year after year. And I think if we're going to move that direction, we have, I think we have a couple responsibilities, one of which is not to make it immediately retroactive. But in fact, to state that projects that come to us year after year after year, the, I'm, I'm going to say, I don't, I don't think the high school project's the same thing because it's not the same project. They do it at a different park, or they construct a different facility, and it's not also a fundraiser for them. And...
That's the same group, but different project, yeah.
Yeah. So, and so, the indication, we might give the indication that subsequently, if you're coming back for requests, you can expect the, you can expect that we are going to be reducing the amount if we, if we, if you continue to come back to us.
I think saying that if you get a grant that you're not going to get, you can't really ask for, I don't know if there's a limit. But, I mean, you could say that, or you could say, you know, we're not, don't, you're not going to get more money than you got when you...
Well, I would suggest that...
The first time.
That, that we might actually say, you might, you should expect it to drop.
Right.
Because we need to encourage them to offer other sources of money in the process.
Right. And then, and most groups have done that. We can talk a little bit of it, but, and I think if they're making that effort, you know, that's, that's a good thing.
But we, are we making a distinction between groups can continue, like the school group or the Rotary or Main Street?
They can have a different project.
Can come back year after year and get funded year after year, but, but not just for the same project?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So I think they, they come back and they, the school...
And that means more than just changing the name of the Antique Fair, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Just something other than Antique Fair.
So it's not maintenance money they're getting. They're getting new project money.
Right, yes.
And I think the school could meet that.
Yeah.
By just saying, especially if they're doing a different park.
I, I have a concern about the, just because it's been mentioned several times, the Antique Fair. And the fact that, um, I think it's a really wise investment for the city to have that event. I think that...
But it's not the city's event. I think that's a different...
Well, I, no, I didn't say it was the city's event. I said it's good for the city to have that event. And, um, I think it's a good investment for the city to help that event. I don't know how we're going to encourage other funding for that event.
Well, if you look though, they have gone from ten thousand down to nine thousand.
Right. I mean, they're making an effort to lean up. I think that's my point.
Yeah.
If, if the Antique Fair continues to come over here and is ranked against the other projects and still is high, they continue to get funding. But I think as long as they're, as long as they're making the effort to, to back off of that each year, which I think they have.
Yeah, they do.
I think they really have.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I, I don't see really an issue with that.
Okay.
Well, you might be able to also encourage them to do something unique with the fair that draws in more broader audience, like have a, I don't know what they do, but you might have a, an antique sale or an auction of a really cool work of art or something like that that they could seek funding for, um, as not just for the fair, but for this extra special event that brings in more people from, from outside Oregon City. How, how many people attend that anyways?
A lot.
It's the largest thing...
It's always, it's always, you know, it's a thousand, ten thousand.
Oh, not a ten thousand, yeah. I mean, it's pretty big.
So I'm surprised the Chamber or the Rotary can't just, I mean, if it's that big, it should be revenue generating.
Well, the revenue, they, they charge per booth, and it's just in case of how many vendors come in. I think they did raise the rates this last year.
And did they get a percent of sales as well? That may not...
I don't think so. I think that's...
One of the granting organizations I also sit on had a, what was it, Eastern Oregon Visitors Association, the OPA. Year after year after year, came back for twelve to fourteen thousand dollars for printing the brochures that went into the state kiosks. And, um, long history, they kind of had the inside track on some of the money, but as resources tightened, the recommending, the recommendation council that I sit on said, you know, you've got to start looking at other ways. Well, as we started to withdraw funds, and we withdrew about, no, well, about three thousand dollars a year, just, you need to be replacing it. All of a sudden, they, this brochure went all digital. Now they have a mass market online that they have never created as long as we continue to fund.
Right.
So some of the folks that come in for some of the advertising, the encouraging part is you can reach a larger market outside of Oregon City by looking at other alternatives that may in the long run, in the short run, cost less dollars. And unless the money starts to disappear, I don't, well, you don't deal with the problem until it becomes a problem.
Right.
Right? We all tend to be that way.
Atholist resistance.
And I, and I was surprised because I know the lady who's the director over there and completely blew, and now they have done a re, a whole rethink of their badge and what they're marketing, and you're seeing a whole new advertising campaign come out because they decided they can step into the digital world because the money was going to disappear.
You know, we generally don't fund year after year because of that, to help people find out their funding sources, not become overly reliant...
Or adopt new technologies and the price goes down.
Well, maybe, maybe it's just a letter, maybe we can just indicate through a letter in a tent, without being very specific on how this should be done. Projects that come back year after year, there are the expectations that, that you'll be looking for other funding sources to, to supplement the program. And we can probably let the Chamber know that they've been doing it, so it's not an issue. We're just trying to send, send an expectation without formally saying what exactly that policy would be.
I can see though, that they're going to come to Michelle and say, what is this new policy? And what, what is it, what, because we're not specific, you know?
Well, we've been talking about it for three or four years, which is exactly why the Chamber has, has submitted projects less and less every year. They, they, people know that.
Right, that there's more out there than just the Chamber.
Right. So I don't know that...
Well, maybe they're careful. Point about giving points for things, maybe you give points to people that are, that are asking less.
Making that effort, yeah.
That are asking less.
Or, or you could write something in there just to say, you know, we discourage people from considering this, say, ongoing funding source because there will be other people ranked, you know, above you if it keeps coming back, or not net wording, something like that.
Your preference is given if you have received a grant in the past year.
Right. And that it's for, it's for different projects. It's not for the same project over and over again.
Projects.
Yeah.
So we're not, you guys are not speaking of putting any limitation on three times per project or...
No.
Anything like that? I just want to make sure.
But if we're going to say preference is, is given, how do we decide what that preference is?
Comment that is always subjective.
I don't think we have to say preference is given, but just more that this, please don't consider this an ongoing funding source.
I mean, one thing we might do...
So they don't count on it.
Maybe, of course, it depends on the...
Thank you. We said that earlier.
The continuation on, on the project, but we do, I mean, we do, we do ask the question, and sometimes they don't answer that. I mean, I forgot about the Chamber incidentally, but have you been funded before? And sometimes we've got to say, have them say no when they have, in fact, been funded before.
Yeah, and we only added that question in the last...
But we could, we could, we could look at that specifically, and let's say we rank the Antique Fair high, but then we give it, we then make a decision while they're there, however, we're going to reduce the amount from the year before if they haven't done it. As we, we can have that control ourselves in terms of the allocation of the funds. And, and, well, that entails having a history of what they did, but that's probably not too difficult for you to do that.
Well, that's right here in the...
Thanks very much for that, Michelle. That's very helpful.
So, I mean, we, we've got the basis then of saying, have we funded this, this many years and will not fund it to the level that we did before? And that might be the easiest way to do it.
Yeah.
The other comment that, as I remember the last couple meetings, and it usually comes from one individual, and it usually comes during the part of the meeting in which I think is a valuable part, we're trying to balance a need against the money we have, and someone says, well, if you're going to have a ranking system, how come you don't follow the ranking system? So if it's a 4.2 rank and a 4.3, whatever that system is, there are some folks in the audience who say, okay, 4.3 beats a 4.2, therefore 4.3 gets it, 4.2 doesn't, and you don't negotiate. I think that, I don't agree with that, but I, it would be, I think that continues to come up, and so it's something that you may have to deal with at some time.
Well...
We've done some, we've done some negotiating.
We didn't negotiate, and that's, that's, I think that's the point. Maybe somebody's come out of it and said, well, we had... Maybe somebody's come out of it and said, well, we had to cut down and we were higher than that. The intent again was, when you've got things that are very, very close, and I totally agree. I was just putting that on the table because I heard.
And since, I mean, that, that's been the argument we've had, but we are also having an effect on the way people are approaching this. The problem was in the last, you know, probably four years or at least maybe even eight years before we kind of started changing that wording, people kind of, I know, and I think we just have to be flat out and say that. I mean, if you don't like the system, this is, don't buy it.
Need always exists.
Yeah, this is, this, I think it's, the way we're doing it right now is the best it has been done for a while, I think. And it's, and we are doing some, we're getting a lot more new projects than we've had, I think, in the past.
I have another mechanical question. Saying we go in with our rankings, our individual spreadsheets, and then we listen to the presentations and we decide to switch some things around. And maybe we've got a $30,000 funded in our ranking up here that gets knocked down and puts them below the line and puts a $10,000 up there, so then we end up with another $20,000. We just move that on down the line?
That's what we do.
Yeah.
I have another subject, and maybe to be brief, was I've heard rumors that the tipping fee is considering to be increased.
There's discussion, there are discussions going on. It involves, at this time, I think, only Forest Grove and ourselves, for laws, have they been involved in those discussions?
Yeah, if we change it, and we just met on this yesterday, so luckily it's still in my consciousness. And I even have my notes. And right now, it's at 50 cents, pretty much across the board. There's one, I think that's at 65 or 75 cents, and we are looking at raising it. But more important, and I'm glad you raised this issue, more important for Oregon City and other jurisdictions is that there are, there are actually two sets of funding that could be charged. One is in Metro's charter and we can charge enhancement fee that we can use for kind of anything we want. I mean, we, it's our charter, we created it, so we use it for things like this. There's also a state enhancement fee charged that the local jurisdiction could enforce on your own. And that could be up to a dollar per ton. And it can only go for the direct vicinity of the station. So it would be more improvements you want to make right around the station. And it's defined pretty carefully and narrowly in, in state law.
So how much of the 50 cents is Metro and how much is it state?
It's all Metro right now.
Because the 50 cents is Metro.
Yeah, we just have, we, and it's been really unclear, and that's why we had a work session on it yesterday. We had our lawyers look at it and it's not even defined very clearly in our charter that we are in fact not using the state amount. So if we were using the state amount, then the other jurisdictions could only require up to a dollar. So if Metro's 50 cents, then you could only do another 50 cents. But because it's specifically in our charter and we are, I think we asked staff yesterday, we're going to come back and have a, we didn't make a decision, it was work session, but we were leaning towards saying, this is, this is entirely our charter. We can raise it, we actually can raise it as high as we want because it's not part of the state law requirement. But by saying it's our charter, that frees up local jurisdictions to impose their own.
A couple of questions, one is how difficult is it to change Metro's charter? Does that take a vote of the people or?
No, it's a.
Or decision?
It's an ordinance.
Okay, the second question is, then it's my understanding that Oregon City currently has the potential to get a dollar and a half per ton.
Theoretically.
Theoretically.
Yeah, yeah, if you wanted to impose the state version, it wouldn't go to this broad grant program. It would go specifically to projects at the site and in the general vicinity, which is also a great area for you.
Thankfully, it needs it.
Yeah, exactly, you mean, I mean, it's a focus area.
It's probably a little bit of area after we can find one.
What is the, you know, general area?
I don't know that, I'm not sure what the, what the borders are, but yeah.
Find out for us and let us know where those places.
Maybe, maybe we'll be lucky and it's the, the area that's served by the transfer station in the Cubewall, Oregon City.
Well, I'm not sure how broad.
So how many, how many tons, how many tons of trash do you dump? She's pointing, no, I mean, as an individual, she's pointing out that our, that our, that our trash fees would go up.
Yes, exactly.
They would?
Yes.
I'm just thinking, how much?
But I remember seeing that recently on a garbage bill thing, that tipping fees had changed.
And we can change the rates pretty easily at the Metro, I mean, not easily because we have to deal with all the haulers and the companies, but it has a negligible impact on homeowners.
On the individual.
Yeah, because it's region wide, we can, we can change it in its pennies.
And it's really no, no additional, lack of better phrase, paperwork for the haulers and the tippers, I mean.
It would be a much more significant impact on Oregon City. I think that if it's a doll, if you, if you require it at the Oregon City, I'm not sure actually. I need to find more of this out. We didn't get down into the weeds about if, if Oregon City imposes it, but nobody else in the region does, it's only on those tons at Oregon City. So it might force people to go to other places if they're dumping, unless all the jurisdictions did it.
This is, this is, well, I think this is an issue for you too. We kind of, well, I kind of initiated this with David Fraser and I went out and met the mayor of Forest Grove. And they had a situation where they've got this franchise, but they've got competition that takes it to other facilities. And their fear is if they increase it too much, then if people are going to go to the other facilities and not to the Metro. So.
Unionize.
Anyway, so, but, but respective staff have gone in, David Fraser went in, I know, and I, you, you went with him. So it was, it was.
Mr. Parno.
No, I don't want to say no, Parno, Mr. Parno. I don't want to insult his golfing. Anyway.
Parno's a ballpark.
Anyway.
Parno's a ballpark.
So they went in and they were the staff that were talking to the Metro people. And I'm sure Forest Grove had, had staff coming in as well. But they, Forest Grove's concern was that their franchise is hard to lose in, in the process.
That was a concern of Metro's staff as well, because some of the stations are owned by Metro, others by private companies, waste management.
Waste management.
So waste management would have to take all of their revenues to their stations instead of Metro. So that's Metro.
So we need to be careful about how much, well, again, we can kind of adjust the rates so that the system wide, we don't lose money. But we want to be careful that we don't, we could, I think what it said was we could go up to like six bucks a ton if we wanted to of enhancement fee. But why would you do that? It would mean you'd lose that much tonnage. So we're looking at something more like a buck, going up from 50 cents to a dollar, which would basically cover the inflation since we have the site. I think that's where we're likely to end up and I can't say.
So it's still in quarks.
Yep.
Got it.
But it's definitely on the top of a lot of people's mind right now.
I'm thinking about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, the Oregon City, the Oregon City City for Grant people, in terms of the grant, in terms of the grant funding discussion that we've had on the criteria, has everybody got everything out there that they wanted at this point for, for Michelle to look at?
Okay.
I have no other generate.
Well, yeah, and we, agenda item four, we want to make sure that we got this clarified that, okay, all those that are on the Metro Enhancement Fee Committee have all your criteria concerns to be dealt with.
These are the ones that we've made consistent with North and Central, right?
Yes, these are.
I think again, we are exploring the whole concept of enhancement grants and the way the different programs are running. So that we might be coming back up at some point with a proposal for change. But I'm guessing this is not going to change. The problem with some, both Central and North and the St. John's site is that Metro operates the grants programs. And so we have to take our overhead out of it and it ends up, one of them only gets like 10 or 20,000 dollars a year and that's our overhead. So we're trying to figure out a different way to operate those. But you guys, you do the program yourself, so that saves us having to take any money off the top. So I think this one is a good program.
So I was going, I was going backwards to make sure there was no other, no other things. I mean, we're beyond that on the agenda item, but I just wanted to make sure that was behind us. All right, apparently we made the decision regarding the ranking system. And I did see, it seemed like there was no divergence in terms of the OCCIT and the Metro Enhancement on those. I mean, those, that idea of actually everybody ranking and, and working off the average ranks would be the basis.
Average ranks or cumulative ranks?
Cumulative.
Well, excuse me, it's the same thing. I just don't divide by the number of people. It doesn't change it, it's just a little bit more work.
There is a difference.
But I'll tell you what becomes important, is everybody has to rank everyone or then it is a problem.
Yeah, you can't just say, I don't like any of the rest of them.
And so, and so if you don't, if you don't rank every one of them, it will have to go to an average rank. That's the only way it would work. But as long as, as long as everybody ranks every one of them, then it's not an issue. We just don't want to change the sample size, okay?
Okay.
Anyway. And it seemed, so, and this is, other discussion is you asked some good questions in terms of whether, you know, whether we could get more money. The haulers, in terms of the recycle they pick up, do they get any reimbursement at all for that? I mean, obviously they're not, it's not part of their dumping fee, but.
You're asking the wrong person. I should know, I mean, the solid waste system is so complex. My head is occupied with transportation and my name, my cities.
You were wondering if they get any part of that fee to help administer the collection.
Oh, they don't get the enhancement fee, no. But the question is, is there a fee that's granted based on recycling as well as the dumping?
That wasn't the question, my question was, I presume that the recycling hauling for the haulers is at some level a cost to them.
That's what I've understood.
Yeah, so.
It costs the haulers.
It costs the hauler, of course, they'd make it up by increasing their, their fee, but, I mean, so.
They're making money.
Well, they're making money, but the point is, it's one of the, one of the reasons our revenue goes down because not that, as you, as somebody else mentioned, we're not having that much garbage dumped at the, at the site.
Right, but like when paper dropped, did that really affect the haulers?
Yeah.
Buildings, construction's down right now, so there's not as much recycled dry waste, building material stuff.
So that, so we were really under six and seven, I guess, in terms of discussion of other topics. And is there any more things that we need to cover? I don't know, I think we've gone through the agenda. And is there any other things we need to do? And Rocky, I think in terms of, it might be, it might be good to, to have a joint meeting with them at some time and maybe you can have Michelle pull something else, but that's kind of independent of the decisions we're making there. With that?
Well, can I just?
You can do anything you want, Michelle.
Swing back here, so just to review, we've approved both minutes, so those are going to show up approved for our next meeting. So your next group meeting, you'll be approving these minutes, basically. I will also include these prior year meeting minutes in your packets since this is venue. I'm going to readjust the ranking forms for both brands so that it's, you know, the projects are there and you rank them in order one to whatever, however many applicants there are. And then add a verbiage in there about, you know, reducing the amount that requests over time and, and I think that was the only one.
If you've applied.
If you've gotten a grant.
Is there something about a representative being present?
Yes, yes, I put that down in my notes. So any, did I cover all the things? And I'll also have the recording too. That's so nice, thanks for that. Anything else I want to add?
One, one thing I just want to emphasize, we're going to this ranking thing, we all have to rank them all. Even if you, somebody did and we averaged them, that person went from one to 10, it's going to buy us the project because you're going to hire, have a higher ranking because, because of that. So it's critical that going to the mechanism that we are having is important. We give the right total ranking. It might be a little harder for us to do that.
Yeah, you have no ties.
Yeah, you don't have ties, it may be very, very, it may be much harder to do that, but we have to commit to it. And I guess everybody's here, so everybody that's involved, although we have some people that are perhaps leaving the, so we'll probably have some new people coming in, but we'll make this clear to the new people coming in that they will have to rank everything, okay?
Yeah, and thanks to Wendell for coming back for the, he was surprised to get my email and being.
Yeah, absolutely, I was on the way fishing trip.
That's okay.
Rules about.
I heard they weren't biting anyone.
All depends on where you're going.
Wherever it was you're going.
No, I'd love it to thank you for all your hard work pulling this together and supporting the group.
And then you'll, we'll take other memo out to the committees on the.